Welcome, everyone, to our April 16 regular council meeting. Very beautiful sunny day, so we all appreciate you being here. The first Tuesday that we have our council meeting. And I just learned that our city is number one in the state of Washington with all of the great metrics and number 10th in the whole United States. So on that great news, our mayor has requested, she is out of town on the city business and requested that her absence be considered excuse for tonight's meetings. Do I have a motion to approve the mayor's request? Second, great. Any discussion? All approve, say yes.
Yes.
There is no opposed, thank you. City Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
We just heard the mayor's absence this evening. Deputy Mayor Malkutti.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers On.
That's awesome. Councilmember Stokes, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Stokes. We have two proclamations. The first one is the Earth Day. Councilmember Lee, would you please read that for us?
Thank you. Whereas April 22nd, 2024. Sorry, apologize. Whereas April 22nd, 2024 is the 54th Earth Day, marking the birth of the modern environmental movement in 1970. And whereas a healthy ecosystem is foundational to the lives and well-being of fish, wildlife, forests, and people in Bellevue. And whereas Bellevue is known and celebrated as a city in a park and has worked for seven decades to steward the environment. And whereas Bellevue has established ambitious goals related to climate change, energy, mobility, land use, waste, and natural systems in the Sustainable Bellevue Environmental Stewardship Plan. And whereas community participation is an essential aspect of achieving Bellevue's environmental goals, and Earth Day is an opportunity for people in the community to learn, volunteer, and get engaged. And whereas Bellevue's commitment to our environment continues to grow, including new initiatives to electricity, electrify homes, help commercial buildings reduce energy use, prepare for the transition to electric vehicles, and partner with our community to keep Bellevue litter-free. And whereas people who live and work in Bellevue can attend our first annual Earth Fest on April 20th at the Bellevue Botanical Garden to participate in the celebration of our natural environment and learn more about how to take action to reduce your environmental impact. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2024 as Earth Day in Bellevue and encourage all residents to take part in protecting our trees and natural environments and join the city in its commitment to reducing our environmental impact as a community and fostering sustainable practices for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lee. We will take the picture after the second proclamation. Councilmember Hamilton, would you do me a favor and do the second proclamation?
Absolutely. Whereas traffic crashes involving distracted driving injure almost 1,000 people on an average day in the U.S., and more than 3,500 people are killed annually. And whereas in 2023, 26 people were involved in a fatal or serious injury crash in Bellevue, and almost 15% of crashes involved distracted driving. And whereas talking on a mobile phone, even in hands-free mode, texting, programming a GPS device, and many other distracting activities can divert your attention away from driving. And whereas Bellevue residents and all people deserve to live in communities that promote safe driving behaviors and healthy lifestyles. And whereas preventing distracted driving injuries and deaths requires the cooperation of all levels of government, business, nonprofit organizations, educational institutions, and the public. And whereas the city of Bellevue works to support safe system policies, practices, and procedures which establish principles and best practices for increased safety on roads and across the transportation system. And whereas Bellevue's Vision Zero effort strives to eliminate serious injury and fatal collisions on city streets by 2030. And whereas the weather warms, more people are walking and rolling, and it is imperative to focus attention on ways to prevent traffic crashes. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Lynn Robinson and the Bellevue City Council, and do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Distracted Driving Awareness Month in Bellevue and urge all residents to intentionally practice safe driving behaviors and pledge to drive distraction-free this month and all year long.
Thank you so much. I believe we have two recipients, Melanie McAlinen and Laura Ray from AAA Washington. Please come. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Council. My name is Laura Ray, and I'm the Vice President of Corporate Affairs and Environmental, Social, and Governance with AAA Washington.
And I'm Melanie McAlinen. I wasn't going to introduce myself.
Just making sure. We're honored to be here today. AAA Washington has long supported distracted driving awareness as a part of our safe mobility for all advocacy efforts. And this year, we've actually partnered with Bellevue native Ishika Benou, who started the Safe Drive Club when she was a teenager a few years ago, involved in an incident with distracted driving, not on her end. And then through this partnership, we hope to reach young drivers, a segment of our cohort of our community that we know is specifically impacted by distracted driving. And together with Ishika, we hope to extend her message across our channels to reach more of our population, not only in Bellevue and beyond, but all Washingtonians in order to keep them safe on our streets. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much. If you don't mind, we take a picture with you guys, and then we go back to the first proclamation. So let's just go down there. Hopefully, we captured Councilmembers On in our pictures. On that note, do I have a motion to approve today's meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second? All approve, say yes.
Yes.
There is no opposed. Perfect.
Can I say hi?
City Clerk, can we do our oral communication, please?
Yes, thank you. This evening, there are 11 total speakers pre-registered for oral communications. So before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules for everyone. The total time for oral communications is for a period of not more than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. The order of priority will be those speaking to items on tonight's agenda, and then after that, the priority will be those speaking to items that will come on agendas within the next 60 days. Priority is given to people who have not spoken within the last 60 days, or again, to people who are speaking on items that will come in front of the council within the next 60. There, each speaker is given three minutes to speak, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. So with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Christopher Randalls, who I believe is joining us virtually. Mr. Randalls, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
I can. Your time begins now.
Excellent, thank you so much. Good evening, Deputy Mayor Malkutti and councilmembers and staff. I'm speaking today on behalf of Complete Streets Bellevue, the organization supporting those who want to walk, bike, roll, or take transit in the city. We followed the March 25 council meeting in earnest because of the impact that your discussion would have on the future vision and implementation timeline of over 15 miles of bicycle infrastructure in the city's growth corridors. With the Transportation Commission having had their first follow-up meeting on the topic on Thursday, the 11th, and with your body approving the minutes for our 25th meeting this evening, we felt it a proper time to express some sincere concerns we have with how the product has been proceeding since your March direction. First and foremost, it must be acknowledged that more details are needed to fully understand the intent of your direction around language to quote "prioritize corridors in the high-injury network" and to "reallocate vehicular lanes capacity as a quote 'last resort.'" Without additional context, these phrases can and are being understood by stakeholders in multiple ways, and it is our concern that staff are interpreting these to mean something that would not be in line with what the majority of council members intended with their March 25 votes. In a city blog post and through conversations that our organization has had with Transportation Department leadership, it has been made clear that staff are not viewing rapid implementation infrastructure as a viable option on the eight remaining Bike Bellevue corridors, instead intending to categorize these corridors as more permanent infrastructure, as longer-term TFP projects, or as candidates to be removed from consideration. However, it is our belief that a majority of council members did not intend to preclude any Bike Bellevue corridors from rapid implementation, nor from the removal of a travel lane that is a last-resort option. Furthermore, unanimous council direction to prioritize infrastructure on the high-injury network in line with our city's 2030 Vision Zero goal means that we must move quickly to implement facilities on these streets. This is direction best accomplished not with long-vision projects to be proposed in the TFP, but with rapid implementation projects as originally intended with Bike Bellevue. Direction to pilot projects that reallocate lane space also doesn't make sense in the context of permanent infrastructure or project prioritization through the TFP, since the whole point of a pilot is that infrastructure can be implemented cheaply and subsequently removed cheaply if the facilities don't work. According to their interpretation of how to proceed on the remaining eight corridors, staff are precluded from moving forward with rapid build infrastructure for which pilots would make sense. Furthermore, we are concerned that limited outreach planned around the Transportation Commission's decision-making process will unfairly advantage those stakeholders with historical power and access to city officials. Your body previously approved a great outreach plan that would prioritize engaging with underserved populations and those who have historically been excluded from city processes, but our organization has not received confirmation that outreach with these stakeholders will be continued. Furthermore, staff have not made available their recommendation for the criteria that commissioners will use to categorize the remaining Bike Bellevue corridors. All of these points of confusion could be resolved by your body providing clearer directions to the commission at a future meeting regarding, one, what prioritization of HIN corridors really means in practice; two, what circumstances triggered the last resort under which vehicular lanes could be reallocated; and three, what criteria commissioners should use to make their categorization decisions. Without this clarification, we fear that infrastructure will not be developed that truly meets the principles of equity, sustainability, and connectivity that your body approved over a year ago. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker on the list is Cameron Brahas.
All right. Good evening, Council. My name is Cameron Brahas. I live in East Bellevue in the Crossroads area and am on the People for Climate Action Bellevue Leadership Team. I'd like to start by thanking you for the funding boost passed in 2022. As a result, the city hired six new sustainability staff in the fall of 2023. In our view, onboarding the staff was the easy part. Now, the much-needed hard work begins. Over the past few months, we've enjoyed being engaged in meetings with the new sustainability staff, were impressed with their competence, and hope to continue that engagement on a regular basis. A month ago, at the city's March 19 Sustainability Town Hall, we appreciated all of the information shared publicly by the city's sustainability staff. That event was very informative, and we hope to see it repeated at least twice a year. Going forward, our People for Climate Action team anticipates encouraging and offering assistance to that sustainability staff with the goal of developing highly impactful community-wide city actions that we expect will have the following results: substantially reduced greenhouse gas emissions in existing buildings of all types and sizes; bolster and greatly upsize the Energy Smart East Side program; accelerate and promote public education about the local greenhouse gas emission causes and available city actions to mitigate them; increase multimodal transportation options for both residents and commuters; create a well-developed climate and resilience element or section in the Bellevue Comprehensive Plan update; and develop criteria for the Wilburton District that will be ecologically sensitive and climate-wise. Finally, in future council meetings, we hope to have the opportunity to outline the specific funding needs that we think are associated with those results, and thereby help the city reach its greenhouse gas reduction commitments for 2030 and 2050. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Court Olson.
Should have a packet in front of you with some graphics that we couldn't project tonight. Thanks for letting me speak. I appreciate the opportunity to see you all again. My name's Court Olson. I live in the Lake Hills area. Tonight, on behalf of the People for Climate Action Bellevue Leadership Team, I want to express our serious caution regarding the city's latest wedge analysis shown in the agenda packet for tonight's council meeting. That chart attempts to project future greenhouse gas emissions in Bellevue. You've got a copy of that in your packet. In overview, our big concern is that a person looking at that chart might conclude that little, if any, further action is needed for the city to reach the 2030 commitment to cut the greenhouse gas emissions 50%, because the chart does suggest that. However, the drawing that conclusion would be a potentially grave mistake for anyone looking at the chart, in our view. We have several reasons to believe that the projections in that chart are quite speculative. Some are likely erroneous. Based on our research of available information, the future projections shown are, at best, overly optimistic. Time doesn't allow me to outline all of our concerns with this chart, but here are a couple of them. The business-as-usual dash line at the top of the wedges is highly suspect. Over time, the line changes slope. When we asked why the slope changes in 2040, city staff replied that there was no reason, and staff said they will ask the consultant who prepared the chart to revise it. The question is, what is the right slope for business-as-usual projection? That's important because the rest of the wedges are all built off of that line. There are risks that some projected government actions could change, be amended, or be repealed. For example, repeal of the Climate Commitment Act will be on the fall ballot. There is uncertainty that Puget Sound Energy will be able to comply with the State Clean Energy Transformation Act, and it could be modified by future opposing legislation. Also, existing federal laws and funding could be repealed by a new federal legislature majority or change in presidents. All that said, it's clear that the chart's author thinks that the 2050 emissions target will be widely missed unless more actions are taken, and we wholeheartedly agree with that. We believe that neither the city's 2030 nor the 2050 goal will be hit. To improve your understanding, we'd like to share another wedge analysis chart that's in your packet that we gave you tonight, and that was presented in the March 19 Sustainability Town Hall. Thanks for your time. We've got one more speaker coming.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Willard Westry.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'm glad to be here. I'm Bill Westry from longtime Bellevue and with PCA. The previously mentioned wedge analysis chart presented at the Sustainability Town Hall by city staff suggests that by adding the following government-city actions taken now could further reduce greenhouse gases' emissions in the future, such that both the 2030 and the 2050 commitments could be reached. Those are, number one, reduce energy use in existing buildings; number two, electrify existing buildings; and three, electrify new buildings. PCA agrees with this. These actions are certainly key to reaching the city's 2030 and 2050 emissions targets. That's because buildings account for half of the latest 2022 greenhouse gas emissions inventory. One can see the potential just by looking at the 2022 emissions inventory pie chart included in tonight's council meeting agenda that shows electricity, natural gas, and other heating fuels make up 49% of all emissions. In future weeks, PCA will be proposing drafts of specific actions that the city could implement, which would, over decades, dramatically bring down the emissions from the building sector. Along with those actions, we also plan to present estimated costs to achieve them. Finally, going forth, PCA will continue to remind the city that a robust and long-term public education campaign is necessary in order to gain public understanding, agreement, and participation in those proposed actions, which are necessary to hit the 2030 and 2050 greenhouse gas emissions commitments. We look forward to working closely with the council and the city staff to reach those greenhouse emissions commitments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Craig Speel, who is joining us online. Mr. Speel, can you hear me?
Absolutely. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Craig Speel, and I am a resident of Bellevue. I'm speaking tonight to thank Acting City Manager Carlson and city staff for extending family COBRA payments for Officer Kevin Beretta and for all city employees who may become seriously injured on the job and unable to return to work within six months. As announced by the city on March 25, Kevin's existing family medical coverage will continue for a minimum of an additional six months, allowing for him to focus on recuperating with the goal to return to the police department and to serve our city. It's important to note that many throughout the city, including myself, were caught flat-footed. Up to now, this type of situation had never been previously encountered in the city's 70-year history. It is a pivotal point for the city coming together. These issues are never as simple as they appear, and takes time to bring everyone together, and unfortunately, the press coverage failed to recognize this. What's important is the city's manager's ability to listen to the community, union, and all stakeholders is important to recognize. And specifically, I want to thank her, Councilmember Nguyen-House, and Council Manager Hamilton, as well as representatives of the Guild and Chief Sheroy for directly engaging with me throughout the process. While this is a short-term solution, I look forward to working the city and the Guild and others to find a permanent solution which meets the needs of all employees in a fiscally sustainable manner that's equitable for all employees who serve the community, and most importantly, this will represent the core values of our city. Thank you very much, and good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Ariel Davis.
Hello. My name's Ariel. I'm a resident of Bellevue. I also work in Bellevue. I commute by bike twice a week to Bellevue downtown from my home in the Westlake Semamish area, and I'm here to voice my support for the Bike Bellevue program, generally expanding bike infrastructure in our city. I regret I was not able to attend the previous council meeting where this was discussed in more depth, but I was a bit concerned and disappointed to learn from that meeting that the general sentiment of the council members seemed to be a unwillingness, perhaps, barring this sort of last-resort language that the previous speaker mentioned of regating sort of car-only lanes. I think that kind of really the, one of the only reasons why I feel able to commute by bike to Bellevue downtown is because of the existing bike infrastructure, the lanes that are available for my use, which I'm very glad that those exist. And I think that the city should encourage that as much as possible for all our citizens to be able to get around with whatever mode of transport is most convenient to them. I think if you take a look at the Bellevue Vision Zero Strategic Plan, you'll see a lot of language in there and other city planning documents talking about how the sort of existing, largely the existing structure of the roads that we have in Bellevue is kind of based off of this outdated assumption, misconception that everybody would be getting around by personal vehicles. And I think that that has been really shown to be not scalable. Personal cars take up too much space for that to be a sustainable mode of transport for all of our citizens. So I'd like the city council to continue the development of the Bike Bellevue program and consider, yeah, just adding more bike lanes, pretty much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patrick Satyanathan.
If you're wondering about my GoPro camera, it's because I'm glad that the Bellevue Police has finally deployed, oh, body cams. Have finally deployed body cams, but they have the discretion to switch them on when they feel like it, like Officer Slonik here. He has a body cam, it's not turned on, but I have my own camera. Okay. Onward. My name is Patrick Satyanathan. I'm a resident of Bellevue since 2006, and I'm here to express my concern about the Bellevue Police Department, concerns, let's say plural. On March 21st, a neighbor of mine called the Bellevue Police to report that he had seen the box of a pellet gun inside my car, which I was loading up for a road trip. There's nothing illegal about a pellet gun, airgun. They're legal, anybody can own them, I can own them. But after I left my home, a couple of hours later, two Bellevue policemen show up without body cams and start grilling my sister, who's visiting me from India. And she, being unaware of her rights, not knowing that she need not have answered any of their questions, answered all of their questions, which included probing questions like, where is Patrick now? Where is he going? Where is he going? Is he in a good mood? Is he mad at anybody? None of their business, is what I say, but they asked all those questions and they went away. But this was a minor incident. In 2019, January of 2019, exactly similar circumstances, a neighbor saw the box of a break-barrel 22-caliber pellet gun, the kind you might use to shoot squirrels or fruit of trees or whatever. But that was enough reason for the, one of Bellevue's finest detectives, Detective Will Halifax, I'm sorry, I meant to say Will Halifax, I always have trouble pronouncing his last name. Detective Will Halifax asked a judge for a search warrant, and it seems when he did get it, and he forgot to bring his lockpicking tools, but he did bring his yank out the door from the frame tools, he yanked out the door of my condo, barged into the bunch of policemen, almost set fire to it by shorting a car battery, which had left connected to jumper cables. I still have the melted jumper cables as evidence, but I complain about this to the Office of Accountability. They say, "All within policy." That no policy was violated. Okay, I shall stop here. Patrick Satyanathan, thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
And this shall not be the last time.
Thank you.
I will show up.
Our next speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I am president of Stand Up America. Yeah, it's my company. Yeah, my political company. Yeah. I want to speak about something what as I think right now happened in America is absolutely critical, because Bellevue right now, I'm from the city, in America, closer we come to America, better for everybody. I am American, and I am Jew. We have right now war with Iranian Muslim. A new coalition come together right now, European Coalition, Middle East Coalition, you know what it means, because Iranian Muslim are pure bandito, you know what it means. And what has happened yesterday, couple days ago, two day ago, it's a unique situation. One kill all Israeli, and it's only 8 million. Iran is 80 million. Yeah, it's different story what is we have. Iranian people for many years talking about, about kill Jew, you know what it means, not exactly Israel, kill Jew, you know what it means. Many people try kill us for last 5,000 year, nothing happen. I'm so sorry. Yeah, so right now, I come condition what is we have in Bellevue. I don't understand why we elect Iranian Muslim in making position what is deputy mayor. I understand he only 10 years here, you know what it means, and right now, he look like a mayor. Can you explain to me, I lived this 40 years in speaking council chamber for 30-plus, can you explain to me, how is this possible, you know what it means? We elect, okay, elect, no problemo. Elect man who Iranian Muslim, you know what it means, in work for Amazon is a big plus too, you know what it means, oh, sorry, minus. Yeah, and we make him straight deputy mayor. He only 10 year live in Bellevue, almost 10 year live only in America, American citizen only for 10 years. Why you talking about? I cannot understand this council. Why you doing this, huh? From seven people here, we cannot find another choice? Or you doing this for special reason? Humiliate American, humiliate Jew, you know what it means? You by definition a criminal, a bandito, you know what it means? Why you did this? Show everybody, so you control everybody? So you not care about America? You not care about Jew? You not care about Christian? You not care about this? I demand what is he resign from chair for deputy mayor. Yeah, council, okay, no problemo, but not deputy mayor. Look, he right now work like a mayor. Can you explain to me, who from you live in Bellevue only for 10 year, huh? Who are you? Only one man?
Thank you. The next--
So I right now want this top and total.
The next speaker is Jasker Anseral.
No, I want what is you design yourself. Thank you. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Jasker Anseral.
My name is Manpreet Kar. I'm a Bellevue resident, and me and my husband Jasker, we are here to express our concerns that the current eviction process in our state and its impact on landlords. As a property owner, I have experienced firsthand the challenges that arise from prolonged eviction proceedings, which can have significant consequences for landlords. And I want to thank council member Gerald Newman House for coming out and supporting us on this issue so far. While tenants facing eviction often provided with free legal assistance through programs like Housing Justice Project, landlords are left to bear the financial burden of hiring their own legal counsel to protect their property rights and interests. Housing Justice Project provides free attorney to tenants facing eviction. While the goal of this project is the protection of tenants from unfair eviction, I'm greatly troubled by the fact that some tenants are receiving these free legal services based on lies. False allegations used to obtain free service and pursue legal action against landlords is a disturbing trend that not only damages the reputation and livelihoods of these property owners, but also undermines the integrity of our legal system. Squatters attorney use issuance of anti-harassment and restraining orders to protect the, to prolong the eviction process and intimidate the landlords. Our tenant has obtained a restraining order against my husband based on false allegations. He has made many false claims which have been entertained by the Housing Justice Project, resulting in significant distress and financial burden on us. This practice is unethical, and it undermines the integrity of entire Housing Justice Project. The Housing Justice Project is a taxpayer-funded defense firm for tenants who do not pay rents. Housing Justice Project received 6 million from State of Washington. It's concerning that they have used almost 100,000 for a single tenant. It's difficult to comprehend how this $100,000 can be justified for a single tenant. Public funds are used to support the Housing Justice Project. I believe that it's crucial to promote the transparency and accountability in how these resources are allocated. This include providing a detailed breakdown of costs, outlining the specific legal services provided, and demonstrating how these expenditures have contributed to projects go. The Housing Justice Project should reevaluate its processes and procedures to ensure tenants' claims are thoroughly vetted.
Ms. Anseral, you can't concede your time. Yeah, if you want to speak, you can. Thank you.
She can speak on my behalf, it's okay. Next three minutes. Let her finish.
If the deputy mayor would allow.
That's fine. You're giving your turn to her. Please, go ahead.
So we urge the state legislature to update the squatter laws in Washington. Squatting has become an increasingly prevalent issue in our state, causing significant challenges for property owners. Current squatter laws in Washington allow individuals to gain legal rights to a property after a certain period of time. The eviction process can be lengthy, complex, and financially burdensome for landlords. This is particularly true when tenants contest the eviction or engaged in deliberate tactics to delay the process. In such cases, the landlords are often forced to navigate a maze of legal procedures and requirements, resulting in months or even years of lost rental income and mounting legal fees. This lengthy timeframe often leaves property owners feeling helpless, as they must endure a drawn-out and costly legal process to regain control of their own property. I strongly believe that it's time for the legislature to revise and clarify squatter laws in Washington to better balance the rights of property owners and the interest of squatters. This could include shortening the timeframe of adverse possession claims, implementing stricter requirements for squatters to establish legal rights, and providing more accessible and efficient legal avenues for property owners to address squating situations. Thank you.
Thank you, council members, and thank you, Gerald, for standing with me against injustice, and thank you to the staff. This is the Bellevue Neighborhood Staff, which taught me the civic engagement, and they're all here, and they taught me how the city works, and I appreciate, and I was in a Bellevue Essentials class in 2017, and thank you to the staff, thank you to the council. So I will email you my today's speech, but make it a short time thus. Only thing I request you to ask Housing Justice Project, my lawyer is trying to contact them, that when this person is going to leave my property? Simple. When he's going to vacate my property? Can, please, on my behalf, just, it's a simple thing. We don't need restraining order, we don't have police resource, four police officers coming to give me this document, 15 police officers coming to the, stop the freedom of speech when I'm standing on the public property, and I'm not naming that guy. I was protesting against the injustice the Housing Justice Project is doing with me. So I believe in humanity, I respect everyone, I respect the staff, I respect the council member, and I respect Bellevue Police. We don't need to waste these resources. If you could, police could have called, I would have come here and picked this up. So you don't need to send four sources. So please, stop this cruel joke which is happening for two years, everyone, international news, it's now everyone around the world is watching this. Please, I am a peaceful and I'm a justice seeker, I believe in humanity. Please get an answer from Housing Justice Project that when this criminal will leave the property.
Thank you. We do have just enough time for our final pre-registered speaker, and that is Sue Mercer.
As you know, I've lived here for 55 years in the same home, and I bought it for 25,000, and you can guess what the current market value is, but that's not accessible to me. That has nothing to do with what I need to speak to you about tonight. I only recently learned that we do not have a good disturbing the peace law in the state, and I learned this because, as you may remember, I house homeless people. And recently, one of those people kind of reassured for a brief period of time, and I had another person staying there, and the whole upshot of it was, she ended up disturbing the whole neighborhood when I was not at the house, and woke up the person who had worked a 4-day-hour shift. And unless, the way it currently is, I understand, the police have to observe the disturbing of the peace to bring charges, and I want you to enact an ordinance. Hopefully, it fits under the state law. I'll be contacting my state legislators about this, so that if two or more people are concerned about disturbing the peace, that the charge can be brought and the officers can investigate. They don't have to be there at the time the disturbing occurs, especially when these people have mental health problems. And I hope that the police can do more to get people like this into a 72-hour hold, and I'll be working with the state legislators to make sure that we improve our laws so that people that need mental health can get it. Now, my other issue has to do with the streets and your priorities. Right now, you're spending a lot of money on landscaping. Fix the streets first, no more money on landscaping until all the potholes are filled, all the resurfacing that should have been done two years ago is done, and don't give permits for building, buildings downtown that take up a lane of traffic, that increase the problem of people getting where they need to go during working hours. Let them close off at hours after 5 o'clock and before 7 o'clock in the morning, but otherwise, I've already paid for these streets, and I want to be able to get wherever I need to go during the day. And the third issue is parking lots. I guess I don't have time to talk about that, but there are holes at the parking lot in front of LA--
Ms. Mercer.
--that people can fall into.
Thank you so much.
Don't issue those permits again.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, that is the end of our list. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you so much, I mean, and thank you, everyone who came and spoke to us. We appreciate that. I think the next item on the agenda is our strategic target areas that our interim city manager is going to cover under the council business.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Mel Koutien. So, we do have an item here for you under council business. Over the past few months at the council retreats, council reviewed and made adjustments to strategic target areas within the council vision, and council also identified some priorities for the 2024 through 2026, and those priorities that should continue as specifically identified priorities and new priorities for the next three years. I also want to note that some priorities that were on the 21 through 23 list were identified as having been completed. Other priorities were identified as being incorporated into the city's ongoing work through the strategic target areas, and those priorities will continue as part of the strategic target areas. So tonight, council and the public will receive a brief overview of the newly organized strategic target areas and council priorities, and we are asking for council approval. This work will be instrumental in the development of the upcoming budget and in shaping the priorities for that budget. So joining from the city manager's office to provide the presentation, we have Bianca Siegel, Assistant Director for Special Projects, and Danielle Verwarren, Special Projects Program Manager.
Welcome.
Deputy Mayor and Council, we do have a brief presentation for you tonight as you consider approval of the updated strategic target areas and council priorities. The action, of course, is to approve those strategic target areas and the 2024 to 26 council priorities. I also want to note that you have before you, in a printed packet, a correction to the set of strategic target areas. The original item that was included in the published packet had misordered those, and that's been corrected, and they've just been renumbered accordingly. No other text changes were made to that, to that document. We're going to start, Danielle's going to share some background on the process to develop the two items before you, and then we'll talk just a little bit more specifically about the strategic target areas and the council priorities.
All right, thank you, Bianca. So just a couple of points of quick background.
Is your mic on?
Is the mic on? Okay, we will get closer. This is a very exciting topic, so I will lean in here. So the city council first adopted strategic target areas and priorities back for 2014 and 2015, so there was really that recognition by council that we need to be future-focused in ensuring there's some alignment in the work that we do. So we update these every two to three years. You all have received reports from us, and we've been tracking those over the years. Of course, we mentioned here at the top that there were two retreats for council here over the last few months. You've reached consensus on those target areas and priorities, so again, we're just here to give you a brief overview. Staff was directed to draft and return them, and we have them with us today. Okay, so the target areas, these all flow up to the council vision. We want to be sure that there is quite a bit of alignment between the council's vision and the strategic target areas. They really describe the desired outcomes for the city over the long term, whether it's robust economic development or high-quality natural environment. So they, over the last year, staff went through a very in-depth process of reviewing these target areas to make sure that we had that alignment with the vision, but also that they reflected council's new direction and the ongoing work. So with that, we came forward with a recommendation to change the seven target areas to six, and we were able to share with council at that time the way that we've chosen to reorganize things. You had two opportunities-- You had two opportunities to give your feedback over the last two retreats, and all of those have been incorporated. Great. Oh, I had a drumroll sound effect, and I think they cut it out. So here are these six that were recommended and that you all have had a chance to give some feedback on. So you can see them there on the slide in front of you. Also included were some objectives. Now, these are, were designed by staff to be kind of shorter-term. So these are the short-term actions that we need to make sure that we accomplish in order to reach those long-term desired outcomes that were described in the target areas.
Okay, shifting to the set of council priorities. As, as the acting city manager described, a number of these are carried over. About five of them are carried over from your previous set of council priorities from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-three. The remaining items from that prior set of council priorities have either been completed or were expressly included into ongoing department work plans and the strategic target areas before you tonight. The items that were carried over, and these have some updated descriptive language to reflect progress made so far, as well as specific areas of focus over the next three years. Those include customer service technologies, the city's brand identity, affordable housing, East Rail, and the Diversity Advantage Plan. And council at your retreats also identified seven new priorities to be added for the next three-year period. And these include expanding arts programs, two specific housing initiatives, looking at use of city property for affordable housing, and also facilitating permitting for accessory dwelling units, preserving the character of Old Bellevue, community engagement work, increasing access to human services programs, and homelessness prevention and supports. So those twelve priorities are what is before you tonight that you had agreed to prioritize at your prior retreats. Council and the community can track progress towards implementation of these priorities with regular updates that will be posted to the city's website. So again, your action for this evening is to approve the strategic target areas and twenty-four to twenty-six council priorities that reflect your guidance from the recent retreats. Staff will then develop materials and messaging to share with the community and with staff in the coming weeks to help share out this information. Thank you.
Thank you so much for a great presentation. Let's just go around the.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes.
To put this in action, can I make a motion, please?
Yeah, please go ahead.
All right, the proposed motion is I move to approve the strategic target areas in the twenty-four, twenty-six priorities.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Let's just do some discussion now. Councilmember Zion, I start with you.
It looks like she's frozen.
That's frozen, okay. Councilmember Lee.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, she's back. We thought, we thought you were fro-
Are you able to speak?
We thought you were frozen. I'm happy you are back. Go ahead, please.
All right, I'll be a little more lively here. Okay, first of all, thank you for reshuffling the priorities and putting the high-performing government first. I really appreciate that because I do think that that is the undergirding of that. I agree with the six strategic target areas. I just want to make sure that I was clear about, or that we're clear about, the existing priorities that will be continuing. So even if they're not on the list, they will still be continued. So for example, our climate action and meeting our environmental stewardship goals, the Vision Zero investments, to make sure that those are in there. My second question is, on the human services priority that we added, I believe it was one point five in our, in our memo. It says increase access to human services resources. I want to make sure that when we say that, we're actually looking at the human services funding and the fact that we have been under-investing in the human services funding to match the needs. And so I just want to make sure the wording is correct for that particular item. And then lastly, we had some parking lot items that were at the retreat. Just wanted to understand how the parking lot items were going to be addressed as part of our priorities. Thanks.
Okay. So to your first question about the carryover items, yes, those ongoing plans that you referred to are, do continue. And the council, in fact, receives regular updates on those items. So those are, those are priority work plan items that are already addressed in, in ongoing efforts. So they're, they are not going away. You referenced the access to human services, expanding access to human services. One of the ways that we do that is by, by providing additional funding to expand human services so that more, more folks are able to access them. So that, that is implied, I believe, in the language that's, that is proposed. And then as to the parking lot items, I'll ask our deputy city, acting city manager to respond.
Certainly, good question. Councilmembers on, and all of the parking lot items will remain as parking lot items. There were many ideas that the council brought forward. You prioritize those for this list ultimately. Those will remain as parking lot items and can be brought back at any time by the council.
So it seems like when we start to have our conversation around the budget might be the time where we better understand holistically where the parking lot items live, as well as then the human services funding, which I understand they're going to start looking at the grant applications. And the needs that came is significantly higher than the amount of funding that's currently available. So I look forward to having that discussion with my colleagues when the time comes. Thank you.
Members on, councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is really very good, a precursor to our budget conversation. I think the council's retreat had target, you know, set up these as targets. And I agree with the target, strategic target areas. The only thing is, you know, I always talk about DAVO is in the detail. So when we went through all this during our council retreat, we talked about a lot of things, things which councilmember Zion actually mentioned, a couple of them. So I just want to be sure that it's not going to be lost, whether it be in the parking or not lot, because I don't recall what's all in the parking lot. So you may be there, may not be there. So I just want to be sure, you know, we don't lose them. The two areas I like to emphasize is in, first of all, it's the thriving people and communities. You know, we talk about where people can thrive and belong. We talk about multicultural, you know, individual people that need to be recognized, to be helped. But one thing that the city has put a lot of emphasis on, which, you know, we recognize, is the working together of people from different culture. So I think the word is important to me, is recognizing cross-culture collaboration. We need to be all working together. We need to understand each other. We need to learn how to work together. That's important, so I don't want to lose that. And the city has a program that's working very hard. We just concluded IFP program, trying to get community-based organizations, because people have to be wanting to understand and be able to. Government cannot do everything, we recognize that, especially things that concern about individual. So we hear that, we see that every day. And so I think it's important to, to, to bring that. I don't know where this will be discussed. I assume we'll be talking about some of these details. So I don't want to belabor it, but maybe I can hear a little bit from you. When do you think this will be discussed when we are going to the budget discussion?
You're right that that would be an item that could come up during the budget discussion. The strategic target areas are meant to be pretty high-level descriptions, and a number of specific initiatives could fit within those, including the one that you mentioned.
Okay. The second one is a high-performance government. I think that's very important. Government carries out the important priorities for the public, for the citizens. And you indicated, you know, all of us has to be working together. We all have to be, I use the word, you know, boys in the boat. We all on the same team. I know we have a great team in the city. We have great staff. We want to include the public, you know, that's the emphasis, public. That's part of our team. And another part of the team is us city council members, who are elected by the public. We represent them, and we have their trust, and we share their perspective. And we are there, we have our own way of, you know, bringing the team together, working with our staff. So one of the important parts is that we need to have the same or adequate resources to enable us to maximize our potential. We're all different, all carry different capability to the council. But we all individually can do more. So I believe one of the things that need to be emphasized, especially, again, pursuing to the budget conversation, we council members need to have adequate resources to make sure that we can be maximizing our effectiveness to be a team member of the city. So I want to emphasize that. So hopefully, that will be also part of the budget discussion. I think those are the real two major things. And the other third thing, just to add a little bit, in terms of economic development, you know, we, we are very blessed. We have lots of people come to Bellevue, and they do, coming here. We have a lot of effort working with the regional economic development bodies. The one thing we need to do is, we need to be more proactive. We need to, we, because we're so busy, you know, we have, we have very small staff, honestly. And so I don't believe we are proactive enough. Okay, we need to make sure that we reach out more globally, as well as nationally, as well as locally. So I want to again mention the necessary resource to be proactive, to look at, to proactively attracting, retaining and developing all the necessary ingredient to make us a economically competitive and viable community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Stok.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments, Councilmember Lee, and the suggestions on this. And I think he set out how we go about doing this, that we're approving the strategic target areas and the priorities and what then, what he's bringing up, which is the next part of this. We, we've gone through this whole process, come up with this. How do we make those things happen? These are things that, that integrate into this and, you know, there are things that we do, you have to have a strategy itself to how do you get there. And so I think this fits in very well, and this is the conversation, I think, comes next on this. And we get the strategic target areas set, get the priorities set, and then we're going to have a lot of conversations on the very thing that, that Councilmember Lee is talking about, which are the things we need to bring up and discuss that. I think that's, that's kind of how it works, right? And I think it's, this is really, a really good step forward. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Newhouse.
Thank you. I mean, we've had a couple of touches on this and, and then staff outreach as well. So I just want to first just appreciate your, your great due diligence on this and, and going over all the, all the notes from our retreats. And, and even for some of us who should have been doctors, you were able to interpret the, the language. So that was, that was great. So thank you so much for that. Yeah, I'll echo a couple of comments from, from, from my colleagues just about as we get into the budget discussion and making sure that these strategic priorities align with, with, with the budget. As well as Councilmember Lee's comments, you know, we had, I would consider multiple touches on improving and growing council resources on a number of different fronts. So I'm, I'm glad that's in the parking lot. But what I'm hearing also from my colleagues would like to see some movement on that sooner than, than, than later. So I don't want that to get lost amongst all the other great work that we do. But thank you so much for the great work of just condensing all, all these strategic priorities, making sense of all of our, all of our different areas and ideas and areas of concern and priority. And I look forward to working with my colleagues as we bring this forward and, and implement them and, and get the budget behind it. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Newhouse. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Also want to just echo the thanks for all the hard work. I found myself getting a little confused in the process and hearing all these different things, and to see it come back like this, well synthesized and put before us, is really great. So thank you for that. I, I do think we've really landed on a complete set of strategic target areas. Helps us stay focused on the critical community building work that we do here every day. I think our council priorities are all the more exciting because in this process, you know, it was clear to see how many of those have already been accomplished or incorporated into the work that we do here all the time. So to know that, you know, that what we put forward really gets accomplished and to be able to see that, I really think that's great. And two, I think the priorities, you know, that's been a really collaborative process. We were out in the community all the time, hearing a lot from community members. And exactly what we hear from them is what I think is reflected in our priorities. They, they seem appropriate, they're ambitious, and, and I think that's the right approach. And I look forward to supporting, you know, the carrying out of these priorities and, and making sure they all continue to come to life and appreciate the partnership that we all have in doing that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Everything that I wanted to say has been said by smarter people on the council. I just want, I echo one of them, and he's just, thank you. And thank you for all of the hard work you did to make this concise version. So we have a motion on the table. If there is no other discussion, we can start voting. Anyone else has any discussion? Great. All approve, say yes.
Aye.
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 There is no oppose. Thank you so much. So I think the next item is consent calendar. Can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
All approve, say yes.
Yes. Aye.
There is no oppose. Thank you so much. We have two study session. The first one is Keep Bellevue Beautiful update, so please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Council, this first study session is an informational item. And it's an update on a very exciting program that the council initiated last year. It's the city's Keep Bellevue Beautiful program. The goal, the goals of the program were to lessen the number of shopping carts in the public right-of-way, coordinate volunteer cleanup efforts, and address graffiti. And I think you will hear in the presentation that much has been accomplished on that this last year. And some changes to the program have occurred along the way, and they have some new exciting information today to present. So from the Community Development Department, we have Assistant Director Mike McCormick-Huntleman, Serena Miller, Keep Bellevue Beautiful Coordinator. And from Development Services Department, Lisa Beauchamp, Code Compliance Supervisor. And with that, I will hand it over to Mike.
Welcome, everyone.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Deputy Mayor Malacutien, council members. It's an honor to be with you tonight and give you an update on Keep Bellevue Beautiful. Believe it or not, we're coming up on our one-year anniversary from when you launched. And who knew how well-received this program would be? And one of the things I want to underscore for this program is that this is a community effort. And what you've seen in all of the different pieces that we'll walk through tonight is a community embrace of the program, and their partnership is essential to get us to the outcomes that we share, which is a love of Bellevue and a love of our neighborhoods and an ability to keep Bellevue beautiful. And we're doing it together, and it's been exciting to see. So tonight, one of the things that we're going to do is give you a short presentation. Again, this is for information only. We're not seeking any council direction tonight at this time. But we are going to cover a few different elements of what now come together to be Keep Bellevue Beautiful. So that includes our litter cleanup events, the Adopt a Street program, which we're going to roll out this summer, again, for people to choose their own streets for residential litter pickup. We have incorporated the abandoned shopping cart retrieval program into Keep Bellevue Beautiful so that now, we started a contract last year, and we're a- So that now, we started a contract last year and we're a year into that, and we're going to give an update on that. And then you also last May, when you adopted an ordinance regarding graffiti and making that a public nuisance, you asked us to track what's going on on the graffiti front. Where are we seeing it? Who's requesting assistance? And what are we recommending in terms of providing assistance for swift removal of graffiti? So we're going to give an update on that as well. Uh, and then we're going to highlight some of the next steps with the program and what's happening. So that's an overview of what we're going to accomplish, uh, this evening. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Serena, um, Miller, and she is going to provide us with an update on Keep Bellevue Beautiful. Serena.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council for welcoming us this evening. We can all be proud and grateful for what council and what our community has done together through the Keep Bellevue Beautiful program. As we launched last year, we have had tremendous community participation at all of our events, including participation from each one of you. I would like, I would like to detail a few of the most important highlights from this past year. We have completed seven neighborhood cleanups in downtown, Factoria, Bridal Trails, Lake Hills, Bell Red, Crossroads, and Newport, during which we have collected over 200 bags of litter from the public right of way. The cleanups have been a great way for the community members to connect, have fun, and contribute to keeping Bellevue's streets and streams clean. I'm also grateful for the participation of the community's youth. We have had over 65 youth volunteers under the age of 18 throughout our events, and we've even had a number of families with young children. We have been particularly encouraged by the initiative of many Bellevue businesses that have participated in these cleanup events. For example, in 2023, Amazon hosted a downtown cleanup event with 70 of their staff as volunteers and is now planning a second downtown cleanup event in May in which they are anticipating 150 Amazon staff members to volunteer. Several businesses and organizations, like the Old Bellevue Merchants Association, are working with us to plan cleanup events in areas that are important to their businesses. This past month, the city's Probation Work Crew Program partnered with Keep Bellevue Beautiful to provide community service opportunities to clean up defined routes that work well for the program. These cleanups will take place twice a month, and routes are throughout 13 of the 16 neighborhood areas. We're also very grateful for the assistance from the parks and fire departments, which are providing dumpsters for the program. This summer, we will be launching the Adopt a Street Volunteer Program. Community members, businesses, neighborhoods, and organizations can adopt a mile or more of the public right of way on Bellevue's streets. We love that we have already heard from several individuals and organizations that they are interested in adopting a street. In preparation, we are gathering all needed supplies and developing the GIS mapping and reporting systems that will make it easy for individuals to select adoptable streets and track cleanups. Adopters will clean up their selected street at least four times a year, and we will provide them with the needed supplies, Keep Bellevue Beautiful bags, and safety training. Republic Services has agreed to pick up Adopt a Street bags from residences during their weekly pickup at no additional charge. We invite the community to learn more about the Adopt a Street program that will officially launch in July. We will have a lot more information and ways to get involved in the upcoming months. Anyone who is interested is encouraged to subscribe on the city's Keep Bellevue Beautiful webpage to receive up-to-date information on the Adopt a Street program and upcoming events. In the next couple of months, we have some exciting Keep Bellevue Beautiful events. We invite the community to join us in celebrating Earth Day on April 20th. Keep Bellevue Beautiful will host a cleanup in the Wilberton area from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. We have already received a great deal of community support and have closed registration with over 70 volunteers. And then from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Keep Bellevue Beautiful and the city's Environmental Stewardship Initiative will host the first annual Earth Fest, an all-ages interactive Earth Day celebration at the Bellevue Botanical Garden. Next month, we are looking forward to our ninth cleanup event. We will be in the East Gate area, focusing on 150th Avenue, south of I-90. We're excited to continue to connect with the community as we keep Bellevue Beautiful. As you're all aware, we piloted the abandoned shopping cart retrieval program in April of 2023 as a supplement to retailers' ongoing work to contain and retrieve their shopping carts from the right of way. Since then, over 3,000 carts have been retrieved by our vendor. We are grateful to the community who has reported carts through the My Bellevue app, which has helped us to collect around 250 carts per month. Our vendor currently retrieves carts on a weekly basis from the public right of way and city properties. Anyone who wishes to report a cart, I encourage them to take a photo of it and report it with the My Bellevue app. I'll now hand it over to Lisa Beecham, Code Compliance Supervisor, who will share more about the work being done by code compliance officers and their outreach to retailers. Thank you.
Good evening. Shopping cart containment is a nationwide concern. Here in Bellevue, we have found our retailers to be willing and responsive partners. Code Compliance meets regularly with our Bellevue retailers. With engagement and encouragement, many store managers have improved signage on both carts and containment areas. Many have also retained independent cart retrieval services to assist with collection of abandoned carts.
We have over 60 retailers in Bellevue that provide customers with shopping carts. Code Compliance officers have developed a close working relationship with these retailers. Code officers have met with all 60 retailers multiple times to discuss signage, containment, and retrieval. We listen to their concerns, answer their questions, provide code references, and discuss areas for improvement. During our site visits, we exchange contact information for follow-up and encourage store managers to reach out with questions and concerns. Bellevue retailers have implemented many improvements in the last few years. Many stores, including some of our larger grocery stores, have improved signage on both carts and their containment areas and established independent vendors to retrieve carts on a regular schedule. I'd like to hand it back over to Mike to discuss exploration of cost recovery.
Thank you. Uh, one of the things that came up last year during a council discussion was a question as to what would be needed in our code, if we wanted to add anything to our code to allow for some cost recovery regarding abandoned shopping cart retrieval. Uh, so we looked into it. Uh, one of the things that we found is it would require some additional code changes, both to require greater clarity for labeling requirements for retailers, as well as an establishment of a fee structure, uh, for cost recovery. And then establishing the administrative resources needed in order to track both a cart that might be abandoned back to a retail establishment and then make a documented case as to that connection, as to why that would be attributed to the retail location. One of the things that we discovered, uh, in doing this is that the overall cost on our retrieval services is pretty minimal at this point, after this first year. Additionally, um, the receptivity of our retailers has been very high. Uh, many of the retailers right now have their own, uh, retrieval services that they're paying for and that they are retrieving their own carts. Especially our larger retailers are engaged in that practice. And that we've discovered that, um, as we are working with them, that the, basically tackling this problem together seems to be working better at this point than needing to pursue an enforcement action. So we're not actually recommending, uh, going after a code change at this time or, um, ramping up an enforcement program. We are recommending, however, that we do track this and continue to monitor the level of, uh, carts that are out there, as well as the responsiveness of the retailers to fulfill their obligations to, uh, essentially retrieve the carts and stay on that as a current practice. So in terms of next steps, uh, we have renewed our contract, uh, with our vendor, who's doing the retrieval, weekly retrieval, uh, service for another year. So that'll go till March of 2025. And we're going to continue to work with our retailers on making sure that they have their signage, their containment areas, as well as retrieval services to collect those carts moving forward. One of the things additionally as part of Keep Bellevue Beautiful that you have talked about was what to do with graffiti, uh, prevention and removal services. Last, uh, May, you passed an ordinance that declared graffiti, uh, public nuisance. And you also asked us to provide an educational campaign or additional information for the public about what their responsibilities are. So we did create a brochure as part of that. It goes out with code compliance officers whenever there's an, uh, incident reported. We're encouraging the community to follow the three Rs. Report it, record it, and remove it. Uh, the swift removal of graffiti is one of the, the best ways that we can prevent future graffiti, right? So we want to stay on top of it, and we work with folks to do that. So we've been tracking the incidence of graffiti, and I'm going to pass it back to Lisa to tell us what she's seeing from a code compliance standpoint.
Community members use our My Bellevue app to alert us to the graffiti they have observed. This heat map shows the reported occurrences between June 2023 and Mar- through March 2024, broken out by year. Code Compliance is aware that graffiti is clustered along main thoroughfares affecting our infrastructure in and around the right of way. Graffiti on city-owned property is referred to the proper department and removed promptly. Our regional partners have teams in place to maintain their assets. Code Compliance has established relationships with our regional partners, and we work in coordination to identify locations for swift removals. Code Compliance works with our private property owners, providing education materials such as the newly created brochure. We encourage property owners to file a report with Bellevue Police through their report a crime portal, and we provide them with the link to that location. And we encourage the prompt removal of unwelcome graffiti.
So one of the things that we've been tracking this last year too with the graffiti is how quickly is it going up and how quickly is it going down? And we're also tracking who's asking for assistance to remove it. Uh, one of the things that we noted in this past year is we did not have a single business ask us for assistance, uh, to remove graffiti. Uh, nor did we have a nonprofit ask us for assistance. We did notice that we had a handful of cases where, uh, residents asked us for assistance. And they generally fit, and they did fit, the hardship criteria that we've established to be able to provide assistance. So we are going to start a new, uh, program that allows us, when Code Compliance is out there responding in the field and they're identifying somebody that meets our hardship criteria, to create a referral to Keep Bellevue Beautiful. We are going to incorporate the paintover abatement or graffiti removal as part of our city contract and be able to send somebody out there to professionally do that paintover removal on public-facing graffiti, right? To folks that help the hardship criteria. So I'm just wanting to give you that update that we're, we're going to take that on and provide that service moving forward to help folks who need it. So without, with that, I'm going to remind you this was for information only and be happy to take your comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Such a beautiful topic, such a great team, and such a great presentation. So I appreciate you all. Just go around the room, uh, Councilmember Newenhouse, start with you.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, um, as you know, a program very near and dear to my heart, uh, um, as we helped put this together. And, um, uh, first, thank you so much, Serena. You are just such a, uh, a great ambassador for this program and always so happy and chipper. And you're part of the reason why, uh, people come out on Saturday mornings to, uh, lend a hand and, uh, and, and pick up litter and do all the other things that you're doing. So, um, obviously you have some great mentorship here in Mike and Mark. And, and Lisa, thank you so much for the great code compliance that you do. Um, although, Mike, I have to correct you on one thing. I knew it when you talked about the very beginning. There's three things you can count on, death taxes and the pride that residents have in this city. So, and that is showing up with all the volunteers that come out every Saturday. It's, 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 it's amazing. Um, and, and clearly, I think the educational piece to this is, is helping as well in terms of using the, the My Bellevue app, uh, more and more are using it to, um, uh, highlight graffiti uh, or the, or the shopping carts, um, or even potentially, uh, areas of the city that might be good candidates for, uh, a litter walk, uh, further down the line. Um, a couple, a couple of questions for you, as well as some additional comments. But, um, on the Adopt a Street, uh, program, uh, where can residents? Because they can, right now, put in, uh, a, a request to, um, you know, want to take, uh, you know, look after a street. Where would they go for more information? And are we going to get those great signs that say, "This street is kept clean by," or "Is adopted by," or what have you? Somewhere to what WashDOT does. Because I'd love to see if they could fit Malakuchin, uh, all the way across there, or Newenhouse. You know, some of us that have, you know, these long last names that are really tough to get on there. So, um, uh, so if you could answer that question, I'll, I'll go through all of them, then you can answer all of them. Um, but that's one of them. So on the, on the shopping carts, uh, when we were looking into this earlier, I know that former Mayor Belle Ducci had passed some code that actually provided us, when I was doing research on this issue, that we could actually find a retailer. Uh, my conversation with, was with, uh, Kathy on that, she's not here tonight, but, uh, that does exist already, Mike. So I'm not sure why we would have to pass additional code in order to, if, if needed in the future, if we did want to provide some fines, um, or be a little bit more punitive, if needed. Um, my understanding was that there was code that already existed that we could take advantage of. Now, albeit we've never actually have exercised it, the last time I looked at this, we have never given any retailer in our city a fine. Uh, but, um, I'm encouraged by what you're telling us tonight, that, uh, the retailers are very receptive. Um, they want to work with us. Uh, they're, 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 they're very happy with the, uh, um, you know, really the service that we're providing. But why shouldn't they? I mean, we are, uh, bringing back their carts for free right now. Uh, now, if they're, if they're putting measures in place with additional signage and, and their own retrieval, um, you know, hopefully that will continue to get better. But the next update that we get, I'd really like to see, if needed, that we have a path forward in terms of, for those, um, and I'm sure there will not be very many of them, but for those that simply have not really put the right guardrails in place. And, because right now, you're absolutely right. I see most retailers are, are, are taking some responsibility with, with their carts. You've got Kroger that has like geo-fencing around their parking lot. Um, you've got others that are just making a, a stronger habit of, of, of collecting them. Uh, they're working with the city. But there are a few out there that I think are taking advantage of the, the service provided by, by, by the city and the free pickup of the cart. So, and, uh, clearly the numbers, uh, indicate that this is still an issue. Um, but I'm so glad that we're doing that outreach and it is having an impact. So, uh, something to, to keep in mind, uh, in, in, in the future. Um, regarding, um, some of the graffiti and also the litter in place, and this might fall outside of, um, uh, of Keep Bellevue Beautiful, but maybe we'd make a request to the city manager that we could look at perhaps getting a ILA in place with WashDOT so that we could address graffiti and/or litter rather than waiting for WashDOT to take action. And part of the reason is because, um, there's been a number of emails flying around from residents of late that have noticed quite a bit of litter around the, the on and off ramps. Uh, unfortunately, WashDOT appears just doesn't have the funding to, to, to really address it. Um, and, um, certainly with the Keep Bellevue program, Keep Bellevue Beautiful program, you know, we've got families and kids, and certainly we don't want to, uh, expose them to cars traveling at a very rapid pace, uh, right near them. But, uh, perhaps, um, uh, there, there's an opportunity to work with, um, with our Transportation Department, uh, city manager to, to look into that.
Councilmember, we'll certainly look into it and bring back some information.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, let's see. And then I had one more comment, but I can't recall what it is right now. But hey, thank you, again, thank you so much. I, I know you've got a number of questions to answer there, but thank you again for getting this, uh, program off the ground, um, getting residents excited about it, educating. this program off the ground, getting residents excited about it, educating them about it, getting them involved, which did not take a lot of nudging, but I look forward to, you know, many years of this program continuing to flourish as it's the environmentally conscious thing to do. We have so much pride in our city. Even as we're growing, we're going to keep it clean and green for many years to come. So thank you for all the hard work that you've put into this program and look forward to it flourishing for many years to come. So with that, I'll shut up, and Mike, you can answer some of my questions. Thank you.
All right, I'll see if I can go through them. I took some good notes. Maybe...
I can speak on the first one.
So the first question on Adopt a Street and sign recognition.
Yes. So starting off, the information for Adopt a Street will be on the Keep Bellevue Beautiful webpage. And then as we build the GIS platforms, which are the mapping platforms that allow you to see what streets have been adopted, where you would like to dump, all the forms that go through that request process, those will have their own landing page at that point. And so all the information will be readily available on the city website. And then for signage, we are still assessing what our options are for acknowledgement, but we will definitely consider that one.
Then you asked a question about shopping carts and what's needed in our code in terms of being able to provide greater clarity on labeling instructions. One of the things that I heard in discussion with our city attorney's office is that the code doesn't explicitly necessarily line up what's needed to track a cart that might have been removed back to a specific retail location. So if you take a cart, it may say QFC on it, it may say Target or Safeway or whoever it is, but it doesn't have an address. And so you don't actually, can't necessarily track it back to the store location if there are multiple of those stores, back to the location. And when you're doing, and correct me if I'm misspeaking from a code perspective, but when you're doing an enforcement action, building the case that links the cart back to the retail establishment is an important aspect of that administration, right? And that's, that some of our code doesn't, isn't that explicit around what's required with the labeling that would need to be beefed up in that? And then the other really was around setting the fee structure, which would be commemorative to what the offense is. So those are some of the aspects that I heard would be needed for further clarification.
Okay. Well, some of that's different from when, we talked about this earlier, because I thought we already had what that fine would be, when it would be issued, and the issue with where the car came from. I mean, that, I mean, if it's a QFC cart, and we know that Kroger is the owner of QFC, I mean, does it really matter which QFC store it came from? Couldn't we still provide that fine directly to Kroger?
It's definitely something I'll look into as a follow-up item.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Newenhouse. Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. I am super excited about this as well. Just like Councilmember Newenhouse, I had no doubt that the community was ready for this. This is civic engagement at its best of community coming together. So thank you for launching the Adopt a Streets and also the fact that the collected litter bags will be able to be part of the litter pickup. So a couple of questions I have, when does that officially start? Can people start doing some Adopt a Streets prior to the official launch? And then the other one that I had was, in terms of some cigarette receptacles, I know when we did the downtown litter pickup, it seemed like there were some areas where something like that might be appropriate, and so I wondered if we had taken a look at that. In terms of the dashboard, love the fact that the community will be able to connect and adopt their area. I'm wondering about the right-of-way for, I know Councilmember Newenhouse brought up WashDOT, you know, Sound Transit and King County, so those areas that are not city-owned, but they are public spaces. I believe that WashDOT, you people can sign up to be able to do the cleanup. Is that something that we could roll into our programs so that our community that are interested could incorporate or find out how to do that within the city's Keep Bellevue Beautiful program? And I think part of that is that, you know, the Bellevue Clean and Green with Steve Fantle, I think he has already been doing some of that outreach. I'm just wondering if there's a way to incorporate more of what they're doing as well as when we were talking about K-12 engagement with Overdue, which is a youth program that's doing litter pickup. So I guess really how we are a connector to those different programs into the one that we're doing here. And then lastly, I kind of wonder if we could do some kind of a mascot for Keep Bellevue Beautiful. I just wonder if that would be something we could work with the kids to come up with something. Anyway, super excited about this.
Sorry, I got excited about the mascot idea. So thank you for the questions. I do want to speak to the question related to the, our partners like WashDOT, Sound Transit, King County, as it relates to King Bellevue Beautiful. So one of the things that Keep Bellevue Beautiful structured around especially is safety for our volunteers and our community volunteers. We're recognizing that we're having families participate. We're really focusing this right now on really residential streets, and if there are arterial streets, that those are clearly defined and we've really reviewed whether or not they have the right sidewalks and pedestrian safety for those cleanups. So we are steering away from freeways on, you know, off-ramps, high travel, light rail, anything where anybody can get injured. If you want to participate with WashDOT, though, there is an Adopt a Highway program that the state has where volunteers can get the right safety training, the right equipment, as well as the right insurance to do that kind of volunteer engagement. And we will incorporate promotion of WashDOT's Adopt a Highway program into our materials. So if people want to do it on, at those locations, they're doing it through an active volunteer program that has the right information for them to provide that community service. So we do want to allow people to do that, but do it in ways that already is specifically designed to meet that need. So I did want to speak to that. There was another question in there, Serena.
So thank you so much, Councilmember Zahn. We are planning the launch of the Adopt a Street program in July. That is something that we're not able to move forward just because of the process for creating the mapping platform and the applications for it. There's still things that we're navigating through, but that will launch in July, and at that time, we will be able to take applications. And then you had mentioned cigarette butt receptacles. I know there's been conversation about it. We can get more information for you on that. I can say, though, that with the Keep Bellevue Beautiful probation partnership program, we do have routes that are downtown that are targeting the litter that is at the Transit Center and other areas where we're finding a lot of cigarette butts. Thank you.
Okay. And then my question about the litter collection at Keep Bellevue Beautiful, how that will work? Because that was one of the largest issues with folks that are doing litter pickup now is what they do with the trash when they pick it up.
Thank you. So for those, we are working with Republic Services, and that is as simple as they put out the bags at their house with their regular trash cans, and they get picked up with their regular weekly pickups at no charge for anyone.
So this is...
Oh, great. Okay.
Yeah, this is for folks who have to Adopt a Street, and then they'll get the big yellow Keep Bellevue Beautiful bags that are clearly visible as to what it is, so Republic Services knows what they're picking up. And it'll also have to be reported to us through the app so that we can record it and keep it accountable that, yes, that is an adopted site, and we're making sure that that was rightfully collected.
Oh, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Zahn.
Yeah, this is a really great program. It's, it was one of those things, when it first came up, it was like, here's the cool idea, let's see how it works and all and everything. But it, right away, and I went on, I guess, the second one, it was really hot that day, too. But you go out on these things and you realize how much junk there is all around. And it really is, I think it's, everybody's, don't repeat all this, but it really is a very positive thing for the communities. It is a community-building thing. And I think it's, and it's extremely successful, which is not necessarily what happens when you put one of these things in place. But I think, you know, Bellevue can do a good job on these things. So I think the question, how often do these sweeps take place? Right now, we're getting around the city. It takes a long time to get the whole city all done, but I assume there's a schedule for that, and you have people going out and checking, do we need to do it again, all that thing. But, and it's one of those things that, the only thing to caution is, this is something that, once you start it, you've got to keep it going. Never let it drop, because you do that and people kind of go away. And I don't think we will do that, but that is something that happens sometimes. And the other is, and it's an issue, and lawyers can tell you things you might not want to hear, but WashDOT, question of the, on the level of safety for citizens on highway areas and everything. I think that's a, you know, there are some issues we have in there, but we'll work through those again. And it's just, it's amazing how successful it's been in this very short time. So really, really appreciate that, and I think it's really great. And thank you, Councilmember, pushing us on this and working with you on this and likewise. And let's just keep it going. And we might, some other really nice ideas on Keeping Bellevue Beautiful might come up as we go along. So thank you. And thank you for the signage. I think that's something that's really been great. Not only, it not only talks about getting the garbage up, but it's really looking at how Bellevue and the city and the trees and everything, how Bellevue looks beautiful. It gets a good image out to people, and they know we want to keep it that way. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zahn. Councilman Lee.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Oh, thanks, staff. You see a lot of interest. You must be doing a really good job. Compliment. I want to give Councilmember Newenhouse a kudos on this. I believe that he has attended every litter picking, weekend event. I've been at a few, but he's always there. And, you know, so thanks. And obviously, he's very interested, asking so many good questions. But I do have a couple of comments. One is sign, you talk about signs. Just kidding, you know? The first way to get your sign on is to graffiti. If they don't allow you to put your name on the sign, so that's, don't do that. But there might be some concerns that people have brought up. I've got a couple of emails about sports events, you know, during, when the kids go there, and then after the game, they leave the litter and all that stuff, you know, they didn't, don't pick it up, or they try to stuff at the existing litter, you know, containers. So it might be a good idea to suggest to groups, organizations that might, you know, be using the field or space, let them know that they may be responsible to make sure that, you know, they keep the place clean, or they responsible for the litter they bring to the event. That might be a good idea. And one of the way to do that is, I'm not sure that during, all the public space we have, together with the school. I remember one time, the city actually takes reservations. I'm not sure if the school district does that, but if the school district does that, maybe the school district can be working with us, informing them that when people reserve space for their activities, maybe they should be aware, be encouraged, you know, to take of their own litter. So that might be an idea. And the other suggestion would be, I know scout troops and stuff like that, they may be looking at their badge earning event, and so that might be another opportunity to work with. So there's a lot to say. Good job. Keep it going. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilman Hamilton.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and all the good work. Obviously, there's a lot of enthusiasm behind the Keep Bellevue Beautiful program. And Serena, when you're out there, you bring a lot of enthusiasm to it, and so that's really appreciated. I think this is great work, you know? We're reminded how important our spaces are to us and our shared spaces, you know? We want them to be clean and welcoming. So the litter pickup, the graffiti removal, getting the abandoned shopping carts really helps with that effort. I know I had my own experience reporting an abandoned shopping cart, and I think it took all of five minutes to hear back on the My Bellevue app, and like, we're on the job. So that felt really satisfying, you know? If you're going to be involved and you send that, it's great to get that communication back. And then, too, I attended the litter event in Newport Hills. I thought it was great. I mean, not only did we pick up a lot of garbage and clean the place up, but it brought the community together. And this was a chance for all of us just to interact, get to know each other a little better. So it's certainly a lot more than just the litter pickup. It's really about how the community can come together and share in this effort. So win-win. Appreciate the effort, look forward to being involved. So keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamilton. The same as everyone said, great job, great program. I really appreciate the focus on both being proactive prevention, like the Adopt a Street, and also reactive solution for graffiti pilot program. Some of the data for a year that you guys are doing is crazy, 340 volunteers plus, that's awesome, 200 bags of litter, 3,000-plus carts, that's like in one year is, it shows, we have a lot of carts, but it shows how much you are on top of your game. And the thing that is really amazing, how you engage a youth, they are not easy to engage. So I'm very pleased that you do that. I just, the only mind-blowing idea that I have, are you guys ready to hear that? It is all about how we can incentivize people to come, the volunteers. And I think Councilmember Lee mentioned some gamification, some recognition. Like Councilmember Newenhouse is very competitive. If there is a leaderboard that shows I have attended more than him, maybe that encourages him to attend even more. So I think if you can encourage people, make them competitive somehow to bring them, there is a leaderboard, there is some badges, as Councilmember Lee mentioned, some gift cards at the end that we can, I'm sure Amazon would love to provide some gift cards for this beautiful initiation that if you can give at the end. I think that would be a great idea that make people like me to be engaged and come more often than less.
It sounded like a commitment.
That's a commitment, yes. I think Amazon would love that. So I would, I would reach out to them and they would, for sure, provide some gift cards. But thank you.
We all heard this, right?
Yes, it's public record.
He doesn't need too much incentive. Just give them a candy or something.
Candy or something. But thank you so much, appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we can, it's 7:49. If everyone agrees, we can have a five-minute break and come back for the second and last study session. Perfect. So 7:49, let's come back at 7:55. I think we are ready for our final and maybe very important study session, Environmental So please. So please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Council. So this last study session is an update on the implementation of our Sustainable Bellevue Environmental Stewardship Plan. And tonight, staff is going to go over an important progress update, which includes the latest greenhouse gas emissions wedge analysis. That is important work to assess how we're doing overall, both as a city and as a community and region, in reducing greenhouse gas emissions and what the plan looks like looking forward for the next 25 years. So joining from Community Development, we have Jennifer Ewing, Sustainability Manager, and Sophia Fall, our Sustainability Program Coordinator. And then from Finance and Asset Management, we have Anna Hagerup, Sustainability Portfolio Manager. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Welcome.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and members of the Council. Thank you for the Earth Day proclamation earlier. We're excited about our first Earth Fest event this Saturday at the Botanical Garden from 11 to 3. We have a great lineup of activities that Sophia's been coordinating and working with Serena. Okay, tonight's presentation is for information only and is our first quarterly update for the year. We'll be providing an update on our plan implementation progress, an overview of the most recent greenhouse gas emissions inventory, and what we call the wedge analysis, which is the analysis of different strategies to achieve our climate goals, and then an overview of our work plan for the year. Some highlights of our progress since our last update in person to Council. We've completed hiring for the five new environmental stewardship positions in Community Development and one new position in Finance and Asset Management. So very excited to have our full team on board. The team has hit the ground running and helped us bring in over $800,000 in grant funding to support climate planning and also funding for EV charging infrastructure for our fleet and employees. We've launched the Wilburton Sustainable District Opportunity Assessment, so looking at strategies to further embed and incorporate sustainability into the Wilburton Vision Implementation. So we've done some good stakeholder and community engagement on that and looking forward to advancing that work and sharing it later in the year. And we've also launched the EV Roadmap, which will be a strategy to help us really prioritize and guide our work to support vehicle electrification in Bellevue. And the little photo here is from an article yesterday in the Seattle Times talking about our recent greenhouse gas emissions inventory and how we worked collectively with the other Eastside cities in the Eastside Climate Partnership. So it really highlights the benefits of our partnership and how we're able to work together to really kind of leverage our resources and expertise to advance our work collectively. So as we were preparing for the update this evening and also engagement with the community, we wanted to kind of reflect back on how we're doing with the plan and also what were some of the priorities we heard as part of the plan update. So we're two-thirds of the way through plan implementation. Of the 78 actions in the plan, we've started or incorporated into our ongoing operations 61 actions, completed seven, and we aim to initiate the remaining 10 in the next year. As part of the plan update and since the adoption of the plan at the end of 2020, we, you know, heard from the community, the, you know, really the top priority was to get started on the tree code update and also a strong desire to see, you know, support incentives and programs for residential home electrification and energy efficiency. And then also similarly, to support commercial buildings in becoming more energy efficient. So, you know, we've really kind of taken that feedback to help shape our work plan over the past several years. The tree code update has made significant progress. There will be a public hearing on the Luca, the Land Use Code Amendment, at the April 24 Planning Commission meeting. And there's also been several study sessions with the Planning Commission on that work. It will be coming back to Council at some point after that public hearing. So likely sort of May-June timeframe. It will depend a little bit on the direction at that public hearing. But that's been a pretty significant body of work that is getting closer to being over the finish line, which we're excited about. And then in terms of other really high priorities, so responding to the desire from the community to have more support for energy efficiency in their homes, we launched the Energy Smart Eastside Program in partnership with other Eastside cities. We pooled our funds to hire a shared program manager for that program. That's one of the positions I mentioned. That program manager is a City of Bellevue employee, but funded from the five cities. Since launching the program, we've installed 210 heat pumps, 45 of those in Bellevue, mostly focusing on low and moderate income households. And it did take us some time to really stand up this program. It's somewhat complex. We have partnerships in place with Hope Link to help with the income verification and working with households in Bellevue and the other Eastside cities. We have a partnership with the King County Housing Authority Weatherization Program. We've helped kind of form some alliances for them to weatherize several Imagine Housing properties on the East Side. And then we also have a great relationship with one of the largest heat pump distributors in our region called Gentsco. So they've helped to bring about some additional incentives through their relationships with different manufacturers. And another partnership we're working on that we're really excited about is with Arch to look at permanently affordable housing properties, single-family homes that would be good, good fits for heat pump installations. So really excited about that work. I'll be talking a little bit more about it later in the presentation. And then finally, we definitely heard as part of the plan update and direction from Council, a desire for us to lead by example. So really looking at, okay, how can we meet our climate goals at the city level first and really demonstrate to the community that we're committed to this? So through the leadership of Finance and Asset Management Department, working closely with Parks, Utilities, Transportation, and other departments, there's been a lot of great work, really moving the needle on looking for energy efficiency opportunities in our city facilities, putting in place the plans and soon the infrastructure to green our fleet. And then Anna's going to walk us through the greenhouse gas emissions inventory results. But really exciting results so far that, you know, is looking like we're on track to meet our city operations goals. So that's been a lot of work to get us there. So with that, I will hand it over to Anna.
Yes, thank you, Councilmembers and Deputy Mayor Malakutian. We're excited to share our updated GHG inventory results with you for the community and municipal operations. What you're seeing here is our trend graph by sector. We've been tracking our GHG emissions since 2011, our baseline year. You can see here that in 2020, there was a drop in emissions. That is the same period that the Council adopted our ESI strategic plan. It's also when the COVID pandemic shutdown began. Emissions were reduced by 8% since 2011 and have remained below the 2011 baseline year, even with population growth at 21% and job growth at 13%. However, since 2020, we have seen an upward trend in our emissions. So we'd like to continue our work to keep those emissions below our target baseline and start trending towards our 2030 targets. Next slide? Thank you. Our 2020 community inventory results align, were updated to align with our local utility and our best methodologies available based on regional data that has become available. Electricity and natural gas are mostly used in commercial buildings, accounting for 23% and 20% from residential sector emissions. Our largest source is transportation. So the on-road vehicle emissions that you're seeing here are largely from passenger vehicles, about 47%. We've seen a 27% reduction in vehicle miles traveled in our passenger vehicles. So that is a positive trend that we're seeing in Bellevue. We have a new wedge that includes aviation emissions from personal and business travel. And we've also included off-road equipment that consists mostly of construction, landscaping, and non-vehicular equipment use. For the 22, sorry, 2022 municipal inventory results, we are excited to report that we are operating below our greenhouse gas emissions target. We've reduced our emissions by 48%, largely due to our reduction in municipal energy use from efficiency and renewable energy projects. We've achieved a 23% energy reduction. As you can see here, the dotted line is our target. And since 2020, we've been operating below that target. However, we, similar to the community, we have seen an upward trend since 2021. So we would like to continue to take corrective measures to continue our downward trend towards our 2030 target. The next results. Here you're seeing our inventory by sector. Electricity and natural gas are used in buildings and facilities, including wastewater and street lighting. We, it's very similar to past inventories and reflects what we're seeing in the community as well. 71% of our electricity is purchased from a local wind farm project in Olympia and a large solar farm project in eastern Washington. We are seeing an upward trend in our employee commutes, largely due to return-to-work patterns that we expect to see also in our 2023 update. However, we have found that 14% of the employees that are commuting are driving EVs, and that number is increasing. Our fleet emissions only increased by 1% since 2021. We expect to see on-road fuel decrease as we continue to electrify our fleet vehicles. Right now, we're at a 3% light-duty fleet electrification, but we're hoping that with the purchase of EVs, we're seeing that our EVs are being driven more than our gas vehicles. So that's increasing. And we're also hoping that employee commutes will also be reduced in the future due to light rail opening in the future. So those are the municipal and community-wide inventory results. And happy to answer questions at the end. A lot of our programs are revolving around these two large sectors of the built environment, energy use, as well as transportation.
Great, thanks.
So the results that Anna just went over tell us where we are right now. But we also need to understand where we're headed in the future. And one of the ways that we can do this is through this analysis called a wedge analysis, which helps us visualize the scope and extent of actions that we need to take at a municipal level to reach our targets. The wedge is a dynamic tool that models different emissions and action scenarios. And I'm going to highlight the key components of the analysis here for you. So on this visualization, we see this solid black line. That shows our historical emissions from our baseline year of 2011 through 2022. And then after that, the line becomes a dash black line. The dash black line represents what we call the business-as-usual scenario. So this represents the emissions growth we would expect, given population and job growth, if we take no action at a federal, state, or regional level to reduce our emissions. So if we do nothing, we expect our emissions to grow by 55% by 2050. And then down at the bottom, you can see the dashed red line. This displays our emissions reductions targets. So a 50% reduction by 2030 and an 80% reduction by 2050. So if we look at these two lines together, we can see that there is a substantial degree of emissions reduction strategies that we need to achieve our targets as we grow. And we can visualize some of these strategies with the wedge. So the solid colors in between the business-as-usual line and the pink line you see there project expected emissions reductions from existing state and federal policies. So it's important to note that the model assumes full implementation of these policies. So we can think of it as the most optimistic vision. If these policies are implemented to their fullest extent, it will take us down to a 49% reduction by 2050. And that's shown there by that solid pink line. And then the gray bar shows what we call the emissions gap after state and federal action. And these are the emissions that Bellevue has to reduce at a local level in order to reach our targets. And part of how the wedge works as a tool for us is that we can use it to visualize some of these strategies for reducing our emissions at the municipal level. So what you're seeing now are some actions in a hypothetical scenario that include electrifying new and existing buildings by 100% by 2050 and taking action to reduce our transportation emissions. And those are shown in those dotted color bars at the bottom of the wedge. So under these hypothetical scenarios, you can see that we would be able to close the emissions gap at the municipal level to meet our targets. And the wedge can help us understand where we need to direct our resources to make the most difference in emissions. And it, you can see that it really comes back to those two areas that Anna highlighted, which are buildings and transportation. And again, this is the most optimistic scenario for state and regional policies. And it's important to highlight that it's likely that these policies may not be implemented this completely, particularly by 2030. These are all relatively new policies at the state and federal level. And we don't have a lot of data for how quickly they're being implemented so far. Additionally, if any of this legislation is rolled back or repealed, this would increase the size of the emissions gap that you see right now. So there is a high level of uncertainty in what the next few years leading up to 2030 will look like. And we can continue to kind of adjust our model as we have more data and it develops. One way of thinking about this uncertainty is by looking at the dash black line, the business-as-usual scenario, as the least optimistic scenario, and the pink line as the most optimistic scenario at the state and federal level. So there's some uncertainty as to where we might actually fall between those lines. And the dashed orange line is to help us estimate our current trajectory based off our recent inventories, where we might end up if we continue on the path of our current reductions that Anna just highlighted. So if we don't take more ambitious municipal action, you can see based on that orange trajectory that we aren't currently on track to meet our reduction targets. So the wedge is a tool that's dynamic. It can show different things depending on the inputs. But the takeaway here is that it helps us see that our work fits into the context of federal and state policy. But there is more ambitious municipal action that we need to take at the city level to reach our targets. And we also know the areas where we can have the most impact that state and federal legislation is not currently addressing. So we can continue to direct our efforts towards buildings and transportation reductions to address the biggest pieces of that emissions puzzle that Anna discussed, even though there's some uncertainty inherent to the model. And then all of this information that Anna discussed that's involved in the wedge is now available to the public on our new Environmental Performance Dashboard. The dashboard is an interactive tool that displays the results of our inventories, our environmental key performance indicators, and an explanation of the wedge and other analyses. People can scroll through and use it at their own pace. And it's available at Bellevewat.gov envirnmentalperformance.
Great, thank you. So, okay, here, okay. So, you know, to kind of follow up some of that, all of that data around, okay, what are we hearing from the community? We had a town hall in March, and we've been doing some outreach for a few different programs over the past several months. I think certainly we've heard from the community kind of an interest in what happens if some of these state policies aren't on track. You know, what does that mean for us to achieve our goals? We have, you know, heard a lot of excitement from our residents around just the work we're doing so far and that we will be ramping things up, you know, now that we have the full team on board. We've also heard, you know, interest from the community and for us, in us kind of continuing to diversify our engagement and who we're talking to to just get more residents interested and motivated in taking action themselves to reduce their environmental impact. We did a survey of the community to kind of get a sense of what people's priorities are for some of our future outreach and education, recognizing, you know, continual outreach and education is really important, an important component of our work. So did a lot of work to really try to engage with diverse communities, translated the survey, worked with our cultural outreach assistants to engage with some different community groups, the Chinese community, the Spanish-speaking community, and a couple of others. So excited about that. And we're looking to, you know, continue a lot of that great outreach. great outreach and engagement as we kind of move into our plan update later this year. And then, in terms of our work for this year, a lot of it will really be kind of focused on continuing some of the efforts we've started. The big initiative for the year, really starting this fall or towards the end of the year, will be updating the Sustainable Bellevue Plan. So the current plan we have is from '21 through 2025. So we're looking to start the plan update process later this year and then wrap that up next year. So it'll be a really pivotal plan for us as we look at, okay, what do we need to do between, you know, 2025 and 2030 to achieve the 2030 goals. So we'll really be continuing to kind of analyze our strategies and how we might, you know, make any adjustments to put us on track to meet the goals. But really with that, you know, we're both in the mode of implementing the plan we have, and then we will be looking towards how we might update the plan. But keeping in mind, a lot of the things we're focused on, those really won't change. We're looking at reducing emissions from our buildings and also from transportation. So a lot of what we're doing now will continue. Some of the things we're excited about is completing the EV roadmap later this year. There's a number of federal and state grants that we're, you know, we have our eyes on, and we'll be trying to determine what's the best fit for Bellevue with the Energy Smart Eastside program. Excited to be ramping that up. We'll be looking at how we might expand the program. We've definitely heard from the community, a lot of excitement around it, but interest in maybe adding incentives for more types of measures people can take in their homes. So we'll be doing some community engagement around that and also doing some analysis around what strategies might have the biggest impact. We're also looking at coming back with an update on that program, and hopefully, an update on some grants, some state grants that we have out right now that we're, we'll be hearing about soon. With the Wilburton Sustainable District Assessment, we'll be wrapping up the assessment and then looking at what the next steps will be to implement some of those ideas. Some of that is being incorporated into the Wilburton Land Use Code work, and then we'll be looking at other strategies outside of some of the code and policy work that's happening for Wilburton for how we might advance some of those sustainability concepts. And then, from the municipal operations standpoint, we'll really be working to continue a lot of the building electrification, energy efficiency, and green fleet work. A lot of that is really ongoing. And then, as part of the comp plan update and the draft comp plan that will be released relatively soon, we have been spending, you know, a fair amount of time over the past year working on updating the environmental element, adding some new climate-related policies in there. So excited to have that out to the public. We know there's been a lot of interest in that area. And then, yeah, as we look to future ESI presentations this year, we're excited to, you know, dive a little bit more into some of these topic areas. So with that, yeah, reminder, this presentation was for information, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having your team picture at the end. That's nice. Councilmember Zahn, you are online, so we go with you first.
Yes, thank you. Well, I love this picture because I feel like this is the force multiplier that we've been working on for several years of being able to have our full team in place because this is about all hands on deck. So I love that this is the picture and that we'll have our first Earth Fest as well. I really appreciate all of the partnerships that you've created. Certainly, as our representative on K4C, you know, we can see that together we are stronger. So, love that. Thank you for highlighting that we're going to be updating our Sustainable Bellevue Plan by the end of 2025. And hopefully, as we connect with other cities and some of the work that they've been doing, we can partner more together about some of the work that we can do together. I appreciate the fact that although it looks like for the community greenhouse gas that it's starting to creep back up, the buildings have gone down, but transportation has not, that I can tell that we've been working really hard on the municipal side. So we are staying below target even after COVID, so thank you very much for that. That is truly modeling by example, and really proud of all of your work to make sure that that happens. I guess a couple of comments for your consideration. De-electrifying heavy-duty equipment, it looks like we're not going to be starting that right away, and I wonder if we might want to think about moving that one up a little bit more because our on-road vehicle emissions still seems pretty high. And then, on the work plan, I see trees, I see different levels of buildings, and also EV. But I'm wondering if there's more we could be doing to reduce vehicle miles traveled in general and a little bit more on the transportation side. And then, for the heat pump one, the Energy Smart Eastside, I love the fact that we're making progress.
Have we lost her completely?
I am wondering, though, how much we need to ramp that up.
Councilmember Zahn, we lost you, we lost you for maybe 15 seconds. So if you can repeat, the last 15 seconds would be awesome.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out, did you hear about the...
Yeah, you were appreciating the heat pump, and then I think after that, we lost you.
Oh, okay, got it. I was just curious about, you know, what kind of trend or heat pump transition we have to do in order to meet our goals. And then, just wanted to understand, in pursuing grant funding, what we might be doing to pursue the Inflation Reduction Act, where those federal tax credits that we're able to pursue, it's not a competitive grant, it's actually something that we would be entitled to, provided that we're making purchases that meets the tax credits, but it would take working across maybe slightly different departments. So I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit more about making sure that we're taking advantage of some of those tax credits that are available to us. Thanks.
Yep. I can respond real quick, maybe just on the tax credits. I think, you know, a lot of our work, especially with Energy Smart Eastside, is really oriented around trying to take advantage of a lot of these great federal tax credits, so helping our residents take advantage of those. So, yeah, a lot of outreach and education is both the federal tax credits and then also PSE incentives, and then plus our incentives. So we really want people to understand that there's kind of three different pots of money out there that they can take advantage of. And then, another part aspect of the Inflation Reduction Act is that tax credits that were previously really only available to private sector or homeowners related to energy efficiency type work, now local governments can actually get a tax credit. So we're looking at that. You can only get the credit after you place something in service, but, yeah, we're working closely to try to understand that process. We're in the midst of a lot of great work. I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, we're absolutely tracking the tax credits. For the 2023, we didn't have any eligible projects, but we're setting up our systems now so that 2024 will go seamlessly. And then, we also are looking at the grants that are coming available to address the medium-duty, heavy-duty, more as pilot projects for our fleet composition. So as that becomes available, we do evaluate that. But yes, the tax credits will be available to us as we purchase EVs in 2024, so we will be tracking that, and we're working with our fiscal managers to get up to speed on that, and working with the other cities and counties that have participated in that program to talk about their experience so that we can make it go more smoothly for ourselves.
I would also reach out to the National League of Cities. That's where I first heard about it, was when I was at the conference, and they have resources to help us as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zahn. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and for all the hard work. This is certainly no small task, and just appreciate all your efforts. So just a couple of questions, just curious. So without the feds and the state and the regional goals being met, we're not going to meet our targets, right? I mean, that's critical. If they don't do what they should do, it's just not going to happen, right? There's only so much we can do.
Yeah, there's only so much we can do. You know, to a certain extent, it's a little early to kind of gauge, especially with some of the new state climate legislation. You know, one of the biggest wedges on there is the Clean Energy Transformation Act. So that was passed several years ago, and that requires PSE to transition to 100% renewable electricity. They are on track as of now. They're kind of saying maybe in '25, '26, they might fall a little bit behind, but then they're saying by 2030, they're hoping to catch up. But, you know, I think it'll be something to continue to monitor, similarly with the other state and federal policies.
Yeah, I agree. It may be a little bit early, but there's sure a lot of that going on and a lot of talk about it. So just kind of curious, you know, you're talking about the 2030 targets and being on track for those. Are we, how are we feeling just in general on those specific targets?
Well, I think from the municipal operations side, we're feeling pretty confident. We're pretty close to the target, and we still have several years, and we're kind of in the midst of a lot of work for the fleet in particular and some other big energy efficiency projects. So I think we're, you know, cautiously very optimistic. I don't know. I don't know how I'm supposed to say it. I think on the community side, to a certain extent, it's difficult to know. You know, I think the 2022 emissions are up a little bit from 2021. That maybe is, you know, somewhat to be expected as, you know, the early part of '21, there was still a bit of a lockdown, and, you know, we don't really know what 2023 is going to look like in terms of emissions, but in general, I think activity levels increased a lot. So, you know, I think the '23, '24 are going to be real kind of inflection points for our emissions, and then also where, you know, we're going to really need to see some of the impact of a lot of the state legislation starting to kick in.
Are there any targets that you think that we may be slipping on, that if we just gave a little bit more of a nudge, a little bit more support or funding to, we could kind of catch those up and...
Yeah, it's difficult to say. I think, you know, we're excited to really kind of get moving this year and into next year with a lot of our programs. You know, it's, we've kind of laid the foundation nicely with a lot of that, and now it's really time to just, now that we have all these great partnerships in place, to really start delivering. You know, as part of the next plan update, I think we'll really be looking at, okay, how are things going and what else might we need to be doing? I think on the city facilities and operations side, I don't know if you want to speak to that a bit?
Yeah, absolutely. For us, the major focus is really fleet electrification and reducing those transportation emissions from employee commutes, business travel, focusing on those options. I would also say, too, that the GHG inventory update that we just completed, we aligned with PSE's utility emissions factor, so that would reflect these state policies. So that's one of the major updates that we did, so that if CEDA does move forward or does not move forward, our GHG inventory trend is still reflecting that, so it's built in. So I think that's important to note, that we're still on that trajectory despite the fact that it's still not in effect yet. But yes, from the municipal operations section, we need to continue to reduce building emissions, but mostly, transportation emissions is our focus.
Okay. Well, I think when you come back, I'd love to know about any that maybe need a little bit of a boost, and then we could get them on track. So I think that'd be a great part of the update. Just kind of curious about staff. I know that a lot of staff's been added to the team. That's great. But just curious, do we have the right number? Do we, you know, think we need more? Or how, how do you, from your perspective, how is the staffing looking? And as you look into the future, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're really excited to have the team on board that we have. I think kind of with any program area, you know, as things grow, we want to make sure we have the right staffing for it. But I think, you know, for now, we're really excited. I think for Energy Smart Eastside, you know, we're also sharing, the staff resources are shared with the different cities. We are potentially hoping to bring in some larger grants from the Climate Commitment Act, or through the State Department of Commerce. So, you know, we're kind of starting to look at different options for what kind of level of capacity we might need to support those grants. We've also managed to kind of supplement our capacity. In our partnership with HopeLink, they have a typical way of working where you kind of, for like, all of our human services work, we pay sort of an administration fee, and they manage a lot of our human services contracts. Instead of using that model, we kind of shifted the model a little bit, where we're basically for the same amount of money, we're paying for a staff position there. So we kind of now have our own dedicated staff person to support Energy Smart Eastside. It was kind of just a different way of financing it, same costs. So they're a really important partner that, you know, we also need to look at, okay, as some of the funding ramps up, maybe we need more capacity there as well. And that, you know, some of that can kind of be, come out of some of the grants we have.
Okay, well, great. You're doing good work. This is really complicated, difficult stuff, obviously, so keep it up. But thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Stock.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is really, really good news, and going back several years. And I know you're really excited now, because we were having some real struggles back then, and part of it was getting enough staff, and we talked about that, and the council and the staffing got that, got that help. It makes a lot of difference. I know it does. And you've, I think, really stepped up this and taken the charge very well on this. And you didn't say anything about the tree cannon because it's kind of not what we're talking about, but it is exciting to know that actually we're doing well with that, too. We're doing a lot of good stuff, and partially, a good bit is having really good and more staff. So we're very pleased to have, we're lucky to have that. The, one question I have, it's kind of a puzzle, is we're basing everything on up to 2022, but 2023 is, it seems like from everything that's been going on, is there's a lot of volatility there in terms of usage of, well, Tesla's having problems and others. There are things going back and forth. It's still in that kind of incubation period in a sense. And what, when do we, when do we get actually up-to-date data, which seems to be a little different from a year ago, or two years ago, actually? And because we seem to be basing everything on 2022, what's the rationale, or how do we approach it? I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so there's always a little bit of a lag, but we'll start work on the 2023 inventory relatively soon. We often don't get a lot of the data until about six months or so after the end of the year.
Yeah, well, there's been a lot said already about, and all, and you'll get some more good questions and comments, but I'm very excited about this, and I'm very pleased that you're stepping forward and really working. When we, we all knew at a certain time a few years ago that we really need to up the game, and I think, and it really takes, you know, you're getting in there and doing that, which you've done, and I really appreciate that. And it's, we're getting information, and it makes it much easier for us to look at this and move forward on it, but in the long run, it produces things really important. I'm just a little concerned about, you know, threats to progress, some legal actions, and sometimes particularly some political actions and things like that. It's a difficult time. But we're charging away, and I think you're just doing a really good job in looking, as other councilmembers have said, looking back over the years, you've really taken the charge, and you and the staff have really done a great job, and we need to continue to have these conversations. And I think it's important. We have good support from the community, and I think it looks very, very positive, and we just have to keep working on that. I mean, there are no easy answers, but I really think, and it's good for the public to understand, that we really do have a very, very robust and very positive program going on. And I think that's something we need to let people know, is there's sometimes, people get frustrated and all, but I think we're doing as much as we can. And if you have ideas or other things we need to work on, then we'll work with you on that, too. And we may have some. So it's a good partnership. And we may have some. So it's a good partnership in terms of good, what a city working together needs to do. And I think, I just, you know, really look back, I think you have just really taken this whole program forward. And we just want to keep working together to really make it do what we want to do and what it can do. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lee. So, Councilmember Lee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great job. So very good information. As we see from what you presented, the major challenge and major impact is from the federal government and other, you know, national programs. And so I think this is something that we don't have immediate direct control, but we can help, we can work on it. To work on it, I think we require regional effort, right? We're working with, I think, Councilmembers, Janice, Don mentioned, we have access to federal government money, state government, legislature. So we have to, Bellevue, I think, has the opportunity to demonstrate our commitment and leadership in this effort. So what we are doing makes a big difference. Because ultimately, what we can control is the local, local area, even though it's smaller. But it's something that we can use to show what we have done and we can demonstrate and show the leadership to help with the big picture. And I look at the local level, something that we can control. I notice that the biggest impact really comes from two areas, which you already mentioned. But I think it needs to be highlighted. When is transportation, right? It's a big chunk of it. That's why they, if you look at the page, whichever, that is six, okay, it shows. And the second is the energy, under the energy of commercial and residential. So I think those are the areas that we can do something about, okay? I think we should focus on effort, which, you know, I think you are working on. I hope we can focus on it, like really make a difference. So finally, ultimately, you know, it depends on the understanding, collaboration, behavior and support of people, the public and the community. I think Bellevue has demonstrated that we have a public that really supports this. So however, we hope that we can actually, when we show them, when we, we have to educate them, we have to inform them. So by doing that, we can get them on board, understand what are the challenges, starting with ourselves, which is our own energy use, okay? Our commercial and residential and what options are there. We talk about maybe electric, maybe heat pump, maybe solar energy. So there are all kinds of options. But everything we can do within our ability. We talk about smart energy. We talk about smart initiative. These are all part of the thing that we're talking about regarding environment, regarding climate change. This can all be incorporated. By doing these things, it will actually influence transportation, obviously, because that's again our choice. People who travel, people who drive, it's our choice, what we want to use, right? And we provide them with the options and hopefully they will choose. So I think those are the area that we should focus. In addition to working with the region, how do we get the big chunk of it, you know, that make a difference? But we have to start with ourselves, with the local piece. I hope this is very good information and I think we need to focus on that. And I think people will understand and that people will speak to us. We'll say, wow, you are doing something. And what's our limitations and what's our opportunities? Let's make sure that we keep focusing on those, educating people, informing them and getting them to help us to accomplish those goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Newhouse.
Thank you. And, you know, it's so great to see the top priorities here. And I really appreciate all your hard work, as what's been mentioned from my colleagues here. But it's, we shouldn't forget, you know, the great work that we have done previously leading up to this and the great accomplishments that we can really appreciate today. Be it the Tree Code update, the residential electrification, the commercial energy efficiency, and then really leading by example and continue to look for those regional partnerships that, again, as my colleagues have mentioned, really is needed in order to really move the needle on a lot of these projects. We can be the best in the world in all of this, but if we're not getting regional support, regional help, government, our federal help, county help, it's really not going to move that needle as much as we would like it to. But really, really love the report tonight and just had a couple of quick questions for you. Number one, what do you think, and the impacts will be if I 2117 is passed this November and they're successful in terms of repealing the carbon, the state's carbon market, market? Two, we've seen, as has been extensively reported on by the Wall Street Journal and New York Times, that Ford, Volvo, Volkswagen, even Tesla are all cutting back production, in some cases rather dramatically. What's the impact to our EV rollout due to that? Do we maintain our current roadmap or do we look at cutting back? Or do we keep forging forward, hoping that the market's going to catch up at some point? But it looks as if all the major car manufacturers are thinking maybe they've, they've overplayed their hand a little bit and got ahead of where the market is right now. So does that impact our EV approach or do we just keep forging ahead?
Great. Yeah, maybe I'll start with that one on the EVs. I think that's a good question. We can actually circle back with our consultants on that one. But I think, you know, what we are seeing in Bellevue is that EV purchases are, you know, really increasing. I think from some most recent data, about 20% of the vehicles sold to Bellevue residents were electric, you know, as of last year. I think just of the total vehicles on the market or on the road in Bellevue of our residents, I think it's, what is it, 11 or so percent are electric right now. So we're way higher than. Both, yeah, even county, everything. So I think there's definitely a strong desire for electric vehicles here. I guess, yeah, it is a good question around how the, you know, nationally, if things might be slowing down, what impact that could potentially have. But I think, you know, just in terms of the market and what we're seeing is a pretty strong movement towards electric vehicles in Bellevue.
Okay. So what I'm hearing then is let's maintain our pace on the roadmap for EVs.
I think so, yeah. I mean, I think, you know, we want to support in particular our residents who don't have access to easy charging. So I think that's definitely something we've heard, primarily people who live in multifamily buildings. You know, it's just going to be a lot more complicated to get EV charging into those buildings. If you're living in a single-family home, it's a little easier to charge your vehicle. So there's, you know, we definitely hear a desire from people who want to have EVs, but it's challenging. So I think, you know, we're still assuming and anticipating, you know, pretty high uptake. But I think, yeah, that's a good question that we can circle back with our consultants on. And then with the I 2117, you know, we have modeled the impact of the Climate Commitment Act in terms of reducing emissions. So that would, you know, kind of make the gap for local action or other action bigger if that were to be repealed. There's also a lot of funding in there for transportation-related investments and, you know, for some of our programming, where we're looking at hopefully getting some nice grants that are, you know, kind of coming through Climate Commitment Act funds. So it would, you know, kind of show up on the wedge more in theory. But like in reality, it would kind of show up in terms of, you know, money that we're maybe not quite banking on, but really anticipating coming through that would, you know, have a big impact.
Okay, thank you. Yes, of course. Please, go ahead. Let me give you my one cent worth, not two cents, one cent to the, to the Councilmember Newhouse's question. I think it's a very good question. I mean, things are changing. But progress changes incrementally, right, in the future. We don't know what it's going to be. But we cannot wait. It's something that can help us right now, right? It is going to be reducing the emission. So we have to do whatever we can. And if there's better things come up, we need to be nimble to catch up with the change. So I don't think we should hold. We don't know what the future holds. As long as it makes current impact, you know, cost benefit, I think we need to, maybe not jump right into it, but I think we need to be able to work through the process in a, you know, in a wise, smart way to, you know, continue our program. Since we don't have much of it, so let's not wait, not hesitate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Thank you so much for a great update. I am impressed by some of the progress that you made on several fronts. The community engagement, the city operation, meeting the, our goals and the EV roadmap. But on the gas inventory result, I am very concerned. And I would, I love this picture and I would love to go to happy hour with you all. But if you can, would you please go back to that beautiful graph that you have? The wedge analysis. That's perfect. I think we heard from one person about our base and that's dashed future prediction. And I acknowledge the prediction of anything in future is almost impossible. But what is your, based on your, and I'm not at all by any mean expert, but based on the conversation you have with your consultant, what is your level of confidence in this dash line slope that is kind of the straight line and it doesn't even follow the slope from 2022 after COVID that we are coming up?
Sorry, which dash line? The orange one?
No, the black.
The black dash line. Yeah, so to address the question earlier from the member of the public, there was a minor error in the first version of this wedge that we received from our consultant and they corrected it. And this is the corrected version.
So the one that has the steep, less steep slope on 2040 onward has been corrected?
Correct. So these projections are based off our data that we have at the city and also some regional data that project growth. The consultants had made an error in how they kind of reconciled those two data sets that made it seem like growth would accelerate after 2044. That's, there's no reason why 2044 would be an inflection point.
But yeah, the, in general, the projection is based off of our jobs and housing unit targets for the comprehensive plan. So, you know, we're not, we don't know for sure that we're going to hit those exact numbers of 35,000 housing units and 70,000 jobs. But that's kind of what we're basing a lot of analysis off of. So, you know, it is a model, which is an estimate, but kind of using the best data we can, basically. Looking at the emissions associated with, you know, the population associated with those housing units and then, you know, emissions associated with those jobs. Kind of also looking at the impact of light rail and that sort of thing where, you know, hopefully a lot of that growth will, you know, really benefit from transit-oriented development. So a lot of the people coming into Bellevue will be living near transit, working near transit, that sort of thing. But yeah, so that's kind of what the, is called the business as usual or the, you know, projected increase if we took no action is based off of.
Okay, so we are basing everything on a model that is, has a lot of uncertainties and it was corrected by some of our community members. Then assume the best-case scenario, everything in federal and state pan out as prediction and all of this color. We are still not meeting our goals on 2030. And then you mentioned we should do more on electrifying our new and existing buildings and transportation reduction. How can we do that? Do we have a plan that? My concern is we have goals that we are not meeting and it seems we are okay with it. Is my understanding correct or really we are going to have a very good plan that we assume everything on a state and federal pan out? And we say, okay, now if we follow these plans, we are going to meet this 2030 goal?
Yeah, this is really meant to be more of kind of an interim progress check-in. So, you know, when we developed the plan back in 2020, a number of these policies didn't exist. So we're kind of refining our analysis to understand, okay, what's the impact of a lot of these, you know, new state and federal policies? And then what do we need to do locally? And then, you know, with the next plan update, I think that will really be when we kind of dig in and better understand what we need to do at the local level. So I would say this update is maybe a little bit of kind of an interim update.
Great. That's great. Because again, I have been seeing this trajectory from the time I was on planning commission, that we are going in the wrong direction. We were lucky we had a deep for COVID, but we are going to come back. And my concern is we, since I was on planning commission and right now, we don't have a very good solid plan. I have one last question and is what if we now in the, not best-case scenario, if some of this federal and state does not pan out? Do, are in the next step that you're coming back, are we going to have some additional plan? Or can we have some additional plan that at local level, a city of Bellevue, we can compensate some of the lacking that some of these state and federal regional policies if they are not going to pan out?
You know, I think that's something we can think more about as part of the plan update. And I think also this is an interesting question kind of for our region and for, you know, the King County City's climate collaboration. I think, you know, we're really one of the first cities to update our wedge analysis. And I think it's definitely brought up the question of, okay, well, what happens if these state policies don't pan out? We're getting a lot closer to 2030. So I think as a region that it will be an important conversation to have and think about, okay, what, you know, where might we potentially make some corrections locally or how do we address that? So I think, you know, that's a good conversation that we can maybe continue to think about as we, you know, prepare for our plan update and then, and get more into that work.
Thank you. I do not bet at all, but if I was going to bet, I put by a lot of odds in favor of we are not meeting our goals, not in 2030, not in 2050. But I'm not going to bet. And I'm sure you are going to prove me I'm wrong when you come back with all of the details planned, that how can we reduce our gas emission and reach our goal? But thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have a great news for all of you all. We have one agenda item left and that's our written reports. Our city manager.
And thank you, Deputy Mayor. It is a written report only.
Perfect. So then I think we can adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.